Thank you, I'd like to welcome you to the December 17th meeting of the Planning Commission. Ms. Jackal, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Turley, will you take role, please?
Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Chairman Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Fleming.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Present.
Commissioner Jackal.
Here.
Commissioner Rosler.
Here.
Commissioner Valdez.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Before us tonight, we have the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any changes? If none, someone make a motion, please. The minutes have been, we have a first and a second. Can we vote, please? I see nothing. Commissioner Valdez, can you? Have you pressed the?
There we go.
The minutes from the last meeting have been approved. Thank you. Mr. Connelly, are there any agenda changes for this evening?
No changes, Chairman.
Thank you. This is a time for oral communications for items that are not on tonight's agenda, so if there's something that you wish to discuss other than what we are planning to discuss, now would be the time to do it. Since I have no speaker slips and no one looks like they're takers, then we'll move on. So I'd like to explain the public hearing process that we will be doing tonight. First, the staff will give a presentation of the project, so they'll tell us the details of the project. Then, the applicant is provided an opportunity to present any additional information. Then, at this time, the commission, we will then ask questions of staff regarding the presentation. After that's complete, then the speakers, people in the audience, public speakers have the opportunity to make a comment. And if you wish to comment, there are speaker slips out front, just fill them in and bring them to Ms. Turley and she'll get them to us. And you'll be provided three minutes to speak to us. After all the public speakers, then staff will provide any additional response to any of the comments that are made, if that's appropriate. And at that time, the commission will, excuse me, the commission will discuss the item and we will make a motion. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, if I could please, for PC 8253 Art Beat on Main Street. Mr. Connelly?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This is a request for a special use permit for a type 42 ABC license, which allows on sale, excuse me, not the typo there, beer and wine for public premises, so onsite sales. The request is at 330 Main Street, which is Art Beat on Main Street, and is proposing simply a request for the license itself, no building or site modifications. The location is on the north side of Main Street, within the downtown area. The general plan designation is mixed use and the zoning is within the downtown specific plan, which allows a range of retail and residential restaurant, other type uses. It's currently an art gallery on the site. The floor plan is shown on the overhead. It's about a 4,500 square foot suite with access from two doorways on the front of Main Street and some rear emergency access doorways. The floor plan will largely remain unchanged from what's on the site today. Some photographs of the site, just showing the storefront from Main Street again. In reviewing special use permits for alcohol sales, the staff has three primary findings that must be made by the commissioner or the approving body. Those are first, that the use will provide for the general convenience or welfare of the surrounding neighborhood, that the characteristics of the use are in harmony with the general plan, and that the activity will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of persons or businesses around the location of the use. Based on staff's review, we've found that all three of those findings can be made. The applicant is proposing fairly limited hours in terms of what's permitted under state law, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. would be the limitation on the use permit. The applicant's intent is to primarily hold wine tastings for events and sales, special events that they have, not to necessarily operate it as a bar, per se. The crime rate in the area and the concentration of licenses are two of the primary consideration when reviewing these types of requests. The sheriff's beat crime rate for this particular beat is 72% of the citywide average, whereas we considered a high crime to be over 120%, so they're not considered a high crime area. The census tract is over-concentrated with licenses, as there are a number of on-sale licenses within this area, but it does include the downtown district where the city generally promotes these types of uses. There are conditions of approval included in the record, which tie the license to an art gallery use, so that it can't be turned into a bar at a later date without some further review and approval by the Planning Commission. Again, it restricts off-site sales and the patrons of the facility are limited to 21 and over once the license is established. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the special use permit for a ABC license at 330 Main Street. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Connelly, is there any provision in the conditions that would restrict or allow outdoor use patio-type of seating or standing for alcohol consumption?
There's nothing currently that would restrict that. That's typically up to the approval of the ABC. They have to request that as part of their license or modify their license if they wanted to have outdoor sales. They generally have to have a fenced area where it's controlled access-wise and patron-wise. And if they were to get that approval from the ABC or request it, as long as they hold their use permit, the staff generally has no objection.
Okay, thank you. And the intended hours are shorter, but the license or our approval would be for the same hours that the ABC 42 allows, the 11 to 9?
That's correct. We did not intend to restrict it any further because we would have the primary enforcement responsibility for any further restriction than what the ABC established.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Fleming?
Thank you. I just had a couple of things. One is, who is going to be doing the ID checking and making sure that there is no under 21? Is there a setup some way for that that you've seen in this layout?
The operator of the business is responsible for doing that under their license when they are issued it by ABC and there are specific provisions that they have, that they have to check ID and verify that all the customers are 21 and over before they serve, just like any facility that serves alcohol.
And the other thing was, I understand and I'm going to support this, I'm positive of that, but I'm just concerned that there's so many alcohol places downtown right now, because it lists a few here, but there's a lot of the restaurants, you know, and everything like that. So it's a necessary thing, I'm sure, and I appreciate the art function of this, the having an art show or something. That would just make it so much better to do it that way. So I just wanted to voice my concern a little bit about the numbers, but other than that, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Mr. Connelly, does the special use permit and the ABC license, everything goes through and they are serving alcohol, if there are children with their parents within the store, is that permissible?
No.
No.
They're limited to 21 and over once the license is established. We've had that conversation, the applicants also here. She can address that issue, but that's a restriction on the license.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll move on to the speakers. Kate Matthews, please step up and provide your address, please.
330 Main Street. I'm the applicant. My name is Kate Matthews and I'm one of the co-founders of Art Beat on Main Street. And I'm just here to answer any questions that may arise pertaining to this application of this special use permit. Thank you.
I have a question, please. How will you handle checking the IDs of the people that are there and handling of children if you have potential customer that has children with them? How will you handle that situation?
Well, my partner and I both took the LEAD course that the Bureau provides and they've advised us on, you know, to how to check ID. And if there's somebody with a small child, you know, we have to let them know that that's not acceptable. It's an adult venue for the most part. I know some art foundations cater more to children and younger artists, but we want to present a professional art gallery with working, professional, adult artists, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Matthews? Okay. Next, we have Mario Corillo. Please come forward, state your name and provide an address, please.
Yes. My name is Mario Corillo. I'm the president of Vista Village Business Association. We're located at 150 East Broadway in Vista downtown. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to speak. I think that the Art Beat is a very viable business downtown. It's one of the newer viable businesses that have been in the downtown, that has promoted the arts. We are working with the city in present to create an arts entertainment district and this would coincide with helping businesses reach their potential and helping them in other ways as entertainment. And this is one use that can help the Art Beat in their process of creating more business and I think it's a positive atmosphere, so I'm up here just to say that we support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Alessi. Please come forward, state your name and give an address, please.
Hi, my name is John Alessi. I have a business at 207 Main Street and I want to just voice my opinion and put, and tell you that I want you, if you can, to vote yes on this proposal. It's a nice gallery, if you've ever been in it. It needs help, just like any business, any small business in the area does, and you would be helping them if you gave them this license. They've had wine there before, they've had events there before. This just makes it that much better. It's always good to support small businesses in the area and I just want to say that please consider giving them this opportunity and this license. The gallery is only one gallery in that area and we don't want that gallery to go. Actually, we want more galleries to go. We want more businesses in this area. So this would be a good step in the right direction to help the business in another gallery in that area. More wine, more beer, more alcohol, well, yeah, it's not as, it's not going to be open 24 hours like the other places are. It's just going to be there for events and I think that's important. And, you know, wine and art mix, so if you can support them, I appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alessi. All right, I know I'm going to butcher this, I do apologize. Is it Miriam Bakar? Maureen, sorry, Maureen, sorry.
That's all right.
Hello, Commissioners. I do have to say, the Art Commission never gets to sit in here, so I'm really impressed. I'm going to have to bring that up at our next Art Commission meeting. I have a business downtown as well, 115 Main Street, and I'm a member of Art Beat and on the Art Commission. So I am out there in the trenches battling for art every day in Vista. This, they're trying to think outside the box in supporting art, you know. Unfortunately, we're not out shopping and buying enough art to support a business like this. They have a gift shop, but this is kind of helping them stay in business and give back to the community as far as art goes. So as a business downtown, even so far, the environment of the wine bars and the craft brew, it really has created a wonderful walking environment. There's a lot of people, there's a lot of vitality and this is part of that vitality. So I just want to throw my vote in the positive way.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions for staff or commission ready to start some discussions? Commissioner Carroll?
What's your finding?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. You were first. You just buttoned in and clicked it.
No, I just want to make a couple of comments. I think that it's a brilliant idea. I think that's, it's a very necessary idea. We've tried, as downtown business people, for a long time to get that community to be a little community, to get it to be the little shopping area, the visiting area that you, we would hoped it would be with the people walking the streets, people going to the art galleries, people going to the, you know, the AVO, the Broadway Theater over on Broadway. And there's been a lot of very, very positive things that happen and I really believe that this is one of those transformative steps that might help to make a move that would be good, to make a change that we're looking for. So I am very strongly in favor of this. I encourage the other Commissioners to do also. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. I was just going to say I'll be supporting the project. I don't have any issues with adding wine to the facility. And I think, just to clarify, on the type 42 license, Mr. Connelly, that's wine and beer, it excludes distilled spirits, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I too will be supporting this project. I think it's perfect for the downtown area and I also like that it's creating, getting people from Santa Fe to walk further, get to the end of the block and it's Art Beat, I've been in several times, the artwork is phenomenal. The crafts are absolutely exquisite and adding a little bit of wine and beer is just going to really make it. So I will be supporting the project. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you, Chairman. I am very much in favor of it and since there seem to not be any dire questions, I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt Resolution 2013 next, granting a special use permit for an ABC type 42 license onsite sales of beer and wine for public premises at 330 Main Street.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleming?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Garretson, do you have something to add?
I was just gonna second.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Since we have a first and a second, let's go ahead and vote. Yeah, I know. Unanimous? Thank you. Your motion passes. All right.
Let's go have a beer.
You're gonna start now. Yeah. That's good. Almost. Thank you so very much for closing those doors. Appreciate that. Mr. Connelly, PC 19-074?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This is a request for a general plan amendment and rezone affecting a property at the southwest corner of East Vista Way and Taylor Street. The request is to amend the general plan from medium-high density residential to commercial neighborhood and change the zoning from multi-residential 15 units per acre to C1 commercial. Would essentially revert the general plan and zoning designations on the site back to the former commercial designations that were established on the site prior to the general plan update in February of last year. The project location is 1806 East Vista Way, as I said, at the southwest corner of Taylor Street and East Vista Way. It's shown here, highlighted. It's an existing auto repair center, Tasker's Automotive, with commercial improvements, garage and a paved parking area. Some photographs of the site showing the parking area and the garage. It was, it's been established there for a pretty long time. The existing general plan designation is shown on the left, medium-high density on the right is the proposed commercial neighborhood designation, which would be consistent with a number of commercial properties across the street and south of the site. Similar with the zoning, residential is shown on the left and existing proposed zoning on the right is commercial. The reason for the proposed plan changes are generally associated with the update that happened in 2012 in coordination with a number of the property owners along this stretch of East Vista Way. Earlier this year, we had a couple of other similar requests. Unfortunately, not all of the property owners and tenants were directly contacted and coordinated with when the staff made some land use change recommendations with the general plan update. And those included a number of smaller properties with commercial improvements that were rezoned in an effort to try to attract some new investment opportunities. But after going back and having discussions with all of those property owners in light of being brought to the staff's attention, there are a few that have requested we revert back, which includes this owner particularly. So based on that, the staff reviewed the application. Obviously, it's consistent with the uses that are- So based on that, the staff reviewed the application. Obviously, it's consistent with the uses that are existing on the site. Wouldn't create any new or changes to the land use within the area or on the property. And so there's no compatibility or, you know, zoning general plan issue that would result from the changes. And so with that, staff's recommending that the planning commission recommend the city council approve it. This would be subject to the council's approval, following a formal recommendation by the planning commission this evening. Thank you.
Are there any other businesses in this corridor that could possibly be affected that?
I've now talked to all of them. This is the last one that we're making a change recommendation for. There's another couple that were rezoned who've requested to maintain the residential zoning in an effort to redevelop their properties.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, we have one speaker slipped for the applicant, Mac. Could you pronounce your last name for me?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Mac Gatorpano from 1806 East Vista Way. I'm here to represent a particular business in question. And I'm here to answer any question that might come up.
Okay. Thank you so very much. Do we have any questions? Nope. Thank you. All right. Okay, so we, any member of the commission would like to speak on this, make a recommendation? Commissioner Garrettson?
Up.
There you go.
Request to speak and microphone on. Two steps. Anyway, I had a chance to meet with Mac, and I just want to speak up and say I support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosler?
I'm going to support it also. My only question John answered earlier, that the property to the south is designated as medium-density residential, and wanted to make sure we weren't going to go through the same thing with them. As long as those property owners are wanting to support their residential density, then I think I'm good with this. If there are no other comments by the commissioners, I'll go ahead and move for approval of adoption of Resolution 2013-Next, recommending the city council approve the general plan amendment and zone change at 1806 East Vista Way.
Seconded by Commissioner Jackal? Please vote. The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. All right. Next, Mr. Conley, PC 4-074, Amendment to Specific Plan 14.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a request for a specific plan amendment for specific plan number 14. Can we get the PowerPoint up? Thank you. Specific plan number 14 is an industrial specific plan down in South Vista, near the Vista Business Park specific plan. It's been in effect for a long time, essentially the early '90s was the major amendment. But it was a combination of a number of other specific plan areas that have since been amended and removed. And the plan's never really been cleaned up. So staff reviewed it at the end of this past year to identify where changes needed to be made and what provisions should be addressed. And we've identified some primary recommendations, which is to clean up some unimplicable sections based on past amendments. To clarify, outdoor storage is a permitted use, subject to screening, based on conversations with the Owners' Association. Allow a few new accessory, special, and minor uses, and adopt a new map, which I'll cover briefly. The project location's about 125 acres in South Vista. This is the area shown in yellow. It's essentially on the north side of Sycamore Avenue, east of Melrose. It's, the properties are accessed off of Engineer and the northerly extension of Business Park Drive from Sycamore Avenue. The Applied Membrane Project that's under construction right now at the northeast corner of Business Park Drive is shown as a vacant site, but that's the last sort of major undeveloped piece of this property. The specific plan map is shown here. This is essentially the planning areas within the map that we're looking to address this evening. Essentially, the land uses in the plan, when it was originally developed, allowed for outdoor storage, contractor's storage yards, that kind of thing, where outdoor materials and equipment associated with those types of uses were permitted to be established in the park with some general screening provisions that had to be screened from the public street or located behind the building. In 2009, when we had a proposed RV storage park at the corner of Melrose and Sycamore, we made some changes to the zoning to require a special use permit for outdoor storage in the commercial zones, which domino affects the M1 zone that affects this business park. So at that point, it became unclear as to whether or not within this specific plan area if outdoor storage was permitted by right. Some of the owners have come in and spoken to staff, and based on a few meetings with the association, we determined it was, in cleaning up the plan, a good opportunity to clarify that outdoor storage is still a by-right use in the park. So if you have an existing developed use and you want to have outdoor storage, it's incidental to your manufacturing or otherwise approved and zoned use, you can do it as long as it's screened. And so those are the changes that we're clarifying in here. Also, that a contractor's yard, similarly with equipment and materials, could have a screened storage area on the site. In discussions with the Owners' Association, they also requested that they be allowed a small portion of accessory retail. So if they're manufacturing something onsite or producing some type of product, and they want to have a small storefront on their site that they can sell out of, that we're going to allow that. And that's also part of, we recommended that up to 20% of their floor area or no greater than 5,000 square feet could be devoted to retail sales. That's consistent with the change we recently allowed in the business park across the street. And lastly, in terms of permitted uses, it could have a small deli or cafe limited to 30 seats. In terms of other uses, some of the requests from the Owners' Association were to clarify that towing is allowed with outside storage. There is actually already a tow yard established within the park that was approved via special use permit in 2004 or '05. And so because it's unclear, again, in the plan, because it refers to other zoning, we wanted to clarify that. They also requested that we allow RV and trailer storage, similar to what was done at Melrose and Sycamore with appropriate screening. And so we've included that as a special use that can be permitted upon issuance of a use permit. Similar to the Vista Business Park specific plan, across the way, there are recreational uses that are looking for this type of space, like gymnastics and instructional studios that need large, open, industrial-type warehouse spaces. And so we've been allowing those through a minor use permit, which is an administrative use permit process to review existing uses, parking, compatibility, et cetera. And so we're recommending the same allowance in this park. And then some of the other considerations and changes that we've made in the plan, there's a $50 administrative fee that's referred to in the plan that we've frankly never charged, so we're taking that out. We prohibited alcohol sales within the park with the exception of manufacturers. So if you wanted to establish a brewery and have a tasting room, for example, you could do that, but you couldn't have a convenience store that sold alcohol. We've allowed for an ancillary convenience store at the existing gas station that's at the corner of Engineer and Distribution Way, I believe, Oaks Oil. We removed some fee reimbursements, reimbursements that were included in there for earlier environmental studies. And then last to note is there's the Area B, which is shown on the map here, and there's the blue. It's a small triangular piece. It's on the south side of Sycamore. Was established as Lynch Trucking and a storage area way, way back when, before the specific plan was established. So we're not making any changes to that. That's a grandfathered use. It's got its own separate zoning. As I mentioned, outdoor storage has always been permitted in the park, and so we're clarifying that. There are already some screening provisions within the specific plan to cover outdoor storage, so we're not recommending changes to that. The uses that are being recommended will be consistent with existing development within the park and neighboring land uses. The special and minor uses that we're recommending would still require additional discretionary planning review or approval by the planning commission. And then, as I mentioned, we've made a number of edits for clarity and cleanup of the plan. And based on that, staff's recommending that the planning commission recommend council approval of an amendment affecting the specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Do we have any questions of staff? Commissioner Jackal?
Mr. Conley, could you go back to the plan map there? Thank you. As you see, this backs right up to the residential neighborhood of Mondrian Casielos. And so my concern is primarily from the noise aspect. If everything that goes in is screened, as well as the existing RV park there on the corner, the screening, I trust, will be adequate from a visual point of view. But I'm concerned especially about the noise aspects of the special use permit uses of the auto wrecking and salvage yard and the towing with the outside vehicle storage. Do you have any idea what kinds of noise that would do?
So you're referring to the special uses that are listed. So that the auto wrecking and recycling facility, I think, is what it's noted there, are existing special uses that were in the specific plan that we're not recommending changes to. Essentially, what we've tried to do is retain the rights that the owners have and add the few things that they've asked for. We didn't look at striking any of the uses that are identified in there for the reason that they've never been an issue.
And so for the auto wrecking and salvage that has existed, and also the towing with the outside vehicle storage, there haven't been any complaints?
No, I don't believe there's any salvage yard down there with respect to the tow yard that's there. It's down in a location that's quite far from residential. Part of the reason we're recommending these changes as well is, all of the properties, with the exception of one, that's adjacent to the residential are developed, fully developed. None of them are really set up to allow for any kind of new use that would be included in these recommended. In other words, outside storage use that would impact or change the use of those properties. They're all screened and set up with buildings backing up to those areas so that it wouldn't affect them. If we made changes to the manufacturing or industrial uses permitted, that might create new noise. But the reason that we wanted to clarify that outdoor storage is permitted is because it doesn't really generate any noise. It's about as passive a use as you can allow. And so that's why we recommend it be considered as permitted, because it would have minimal impact on the adjacent sensitive land uses.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jackal. So, Mr. Conley, if I'm understanding correctly, the lots that are directly adjacent to the residential area that Ms. Jackal is talking about, those already have buildings on them?
Yeah, with the exception of this one right here, that VID owns. That's a vacant lot. But all the other lots, this is VID's headquarters, these are industrial buildings that back up to the property line, and these are industrial buildings that back up to the property line as well. So this is their last remaining vacant lot that's adjacent to the residential. VID actually was part of the team of owners that met with us, and they asked for RV storage to be considered. That's something that they may consider on that lot in the future.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Garrettson?
Sorry. Three questions. One is on the fencing. You call it screening. And the question is, where the RV and boat storage is, there's a nice, solid fence. Almost directly across the street on Sycamore, there's a chain-link fence with a bunch of equipment stored that's kind of unsightly. Explain that, please.
Excellent question. The RV storage park was built under our current standards for screening, which we consider to be a minimum six-foot masonry wall or higher, up to 10 feet, if it's going to screen material or equipment that's higher than six feet tall. So any new storage use would be required to meet that standard. What's across the street is actually shown in Area B. That's the Lynch Trucking Yard that I was referring to earlier. That's the triangular site. That's a grandfathered use, so it was established prior to the specific plan. There were no screening requirements applied at the time, and we can't go back and compel them to do that unless they ask us to.
But future storage would require the same kind of screening that exists with the RV and boat storage?
Correct.
Okay. Question number two relates to auto wrecking salvage yard. How about a junkyard? Does that mean that you could have a junkyard with old cars that are towed in?
If you got a special use permit. I guess it would be, depending on what we consider to be an auto wrecking salvage yard, but...
But it would have to be approved?
It would require discretionary approval by the planning commission.
Okay. And the third question was recycling. Would that, could that also be a transfer station?
No, typically, there is a definition of recycling in our development code, and it's generally material recycling. So you're going to bring in something that they're going to take and process onsite and send offsite or recycle there and send a different bulk material offsite. But that's what's envisioned by recycling. That's what is defined in our development code as recycling.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners? If none, is somebody ready to make a motion? Commissioner Garrettson? Have a microphone?
Recommend approval.
Commissioner Carroll?
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second? Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have commissions, staff discussion, council actions, and reports. Mr. Conley?
I can report on a couple of things. The recent actions the city council took. We approved our climate action plan, finally. That was a big step for us. So I appreciate the commission's review of that over the summer. Finally made it to the council, and we're hopeful that that is the end of it. We are planning on having a discussion on inclusionary housing that may be coming up, and we'll be sure to come back to the commission and talk about that topic. But it's a request that's come in from the Building Industry Association, so an issue that we'll be covering in the next few months. We're going to be updating our noise ordinance, so that's something else that's coming back to council. We also received a grant for an update of our downtown specific plan, and we're going to start that process in January. So we'll probably be looking to the commission to help us pick some subcommittees to oversee that process. Demolition on Paseo Santa Fe is just finishing up. They're just knocking down the last buildings this week. So we're hoping the construction on the underground utilities out there starts in early part of next year. That's it.
Thank you. On the dais from October 22nd, there was a letter from MOVE.
Yes.
I read it. I was surprised and shocked. And I'm not sure if the rest of the commissioners read the letter, but it was concerning the G8 property, the property on the corner of Santa Fe and Vista Village Drive. And specifically, the letter addresses the parking. And one, beginning of the third paragraph says, "However, the MOVE Alliance is concerned with the city's proposed requirements for what seems to be excessive parking requirements for this mixed-use transit-oriented project." So I know for us, the parking was a big issue, and we had a lot of discussions. And then the next paragraph, they, the people from MOVE are recommending that, "In lieu of the residential parking spaces, that the city is encouraged to work with..." of the residential parking spaces, that the city is encouraged to work with North County Transit District and the developer to enable such transactions to occur where they're... Oh, shoot. I forgot to circle that. They're encouraging the developers to provide transit passes to the people in lieu of driving their own cars. It was, it is...
That's a model that's been looked at by some other agencies as a way to reduce parking.
Yeah, it was interesting. And the other thing that I would like to know is, we submitted a, let's see, a smart growth incentive program, and they denied it.
So we submitted two grant requests under the smart growth incentive program. One was for, one was a planning grant for our downtown plan, which we got, and we're doing that. The other was an infrastructure grant for construction money toward building the street improvements, and that's what we were not successful on.
Okay. Anything more on the G8 project in itself?
They are cranking away. Ms. Chow's gonna bring it back any day now.
Oh, good.
You can see the concerned look on her face.
Commissioner Fleming?
Just following up on that same thing, is I was just curious about the affordable housing that's across from the transit center. Any word on what's going on there that we've approved?
North Santa Fe, you mean? Just by Washington there? Yeah, they are processing...
Yeah, the one that's, it was right across where the transit center is.
So there's two projects down there. There are affordable projects that we recently approved. One is Paseo Santa Fe, the other one is North Santa Fe. The North Santa Fe is across the transit center, yeah. So they, they're doing their final engineering right now. They're processing their building plans.
Any idea when they might get started?
My gut is they're probably going to start construction in late summer.
Okay.
Maybe earlier, but they have to go through quite a process with the tax credit agency.
That's the one thing that I've noticed in my short time on the planning commission, is we approve things, and it takes forever to seal them. That's, you know...
Yeah. That's how it rolls.
Government, that's, that's the way it works?
Commissioner Carroll? Okay. Anybody else? No? I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and thank you all very much. Meeting is now adjourned. Students were available to sign your papers if you need them. Thank you.